Fortunately ill tonight, so I am happy to stand in his place and communicate the updates. I'm not really going to say much about this because this is his report and his actions not mine, but you can see some of the highlights from the past month for him. Specifically where he's been spending time and doing the good things that we all know he does. So I guess I would answer questions, but that's it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Russell. I know that he appreciate that in his absence. Now we're going to move on to board comments and we're going to start with Julie.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you're ready to return to school next week. This month I attended a webinar on keeping our public schools public, which we all want to do, obviously. I attended Sunny Day and helped with that and our robotics team as well went to IRI. It's an invitational and it's international. We had teams from Canada and Mexico and many across the United States. So that's it.
Thank you, Julie. Howard?
Good evening. Glad to see everybody showing up. Yeah, I too would like to say that I guess it's not too early to say welcome to school. We're getting started here pretty soon here, so I hope you all enjoyed your summer. Now it's time to get to work and try and get these kids educated. Thanks.
Thank you, Howard. Dennis?
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, members. I'd be sure you have a great vacation and are you ready for the next year? And also I hope we go where the same way what we did the last year. As we expect to have this new year. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dennis. LaShawna?
Good evening, everyone. I hope you are figuring out how to stay cool because it is quite muggy out there. This month of July has been a busy community outreach month. We had the Youth Power Expo in conjunction with M L T, my organization in Warren, and we serviced a lot of our McKinney Vento students that are in our custodium. So that was an awesome event. They were able to get free clothes, fresh produce, just an array of resources with over 45 vendors there. So really glad for our families connecting them to resources. I attended education day at the Black Expo, got to hear our superintendent on the panel. He was dynamic as usual. And then Mr. Taylor and Dr. Janetti in their workshop, that was great. Also was a part of M C R C's back to school event and the line was kind of wrapped around the building and down the street. But got to engage and meet with a lot of our families, get some of their insight and also volunteer where was needed. And of course, I am on our W A F E board, so W A F E is doing well, raising a lot of money. And if my figures are correct, if not, we'll edit it next year to make it change. But I think for the golf outing, Ms. Brittany reported, we made around $25,000. So thank you for your support. Thank you for supporting W A F E as W A F E does give back a lot to our teachers and our Warren community. So Dr. Williams, that is my report.
Thank you so much, LaShawna. Terry?
Good evening and welcome, everyone. I wanted to share that I've attended the Warren Adult Education graduation with a lot of members of our board. It was so nice to see people go back and get their high school equivalency degree. A lot of our people in the district don't know that Warren Adult Education is free programming. So if you want to go and get your C D L, learn welding, things like that, those are offered free paid through by grants. Also, I attended the M C R C back to school event. I want to share what some of the families of the students made. There was a nice exhibit and like she said, tons of vendors, but the community children made this. And so it's been granted gifted to not just the board, but the entire district to be displayed here in our outdoor showroom. So thank you to all those children. They did a fabulous job and I love how they put the heart and the word love. It does take the heart of a community and the love and support of a community to raise our children and to keep our community strong. So with that, Ms. Williams, I will give it back to you.
Thank you. As you can see, we're doing so many wonderful things already here in Warren. As LaShawna and Terry mentioned, I too attended all of these events and I will not go over them one by one. But each event was just fantastic and wonderful, a great kickoff to our school year. And with that being said, in our room today, I met some new people here that's coming into Warren, that's mixing in with the old people that's been here for a while. And when I was a teacher in school, I taught the kids this poem. Make new friends, but keep the old because one is silver and the other is gold. So we are welcoming you because you are our new friends, new to our community. We want to say welcome and we thank you. And we just want the old members of our community and our school system to just reach out and show them love and welcome them. I think you're going to like it here. So with that being said, we're going to move on to our, do we have any green cards, LaShawna?
Not at this time, President Williams.
Okay, thank you. Well, with that, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. If you don't mind, I put my little glasses on here. It includes approval amendments, financial report and payroll claim, our financial report, claim register and electronic payments, our financial report, year to date summary of fund balances, human resources report, permission to accept grants, we don't have any at this time, change orders for some of our schools, as you can see in the program, use of school property, and conflict of interest form Shirley Goody. Can I have a motion?
I will make a motion.
Second.
Terry made a motion and Julie second. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, we will have a vote. LaShawna?
Please let me know if you can see that electronically on your computers. I'll call Julie. Mr. Howard. Mr. Dennis.
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Terry. LaShawna is a yes. Motion passed.
Thank you, LaShawna. At this time, we're going to have reports and he's already in place, Ryan Russell.
I'm going to back up just a second because we do need to celebrate some new staff here and we'd like to do some formal introductions. So President Williams, in spirit of what you just said in your opening comments, we're getting ready to celebrate. We typically say black and gold, but in your spirit, we'll say we're going to celebrate some silver and gold because we have some people coming back to us and we have some new faces as well. So at this time, I'm going to call a whole bunch of people up here and then we'll do individual introductions and we'll give an opportunity for them to introduce themselves and then shake your hands as well as we go through this. So at this time, I would like to, you know who you are, but I would like to call you up to the podium here beside me. Lamara Finley, Alicia Smith, Ben Palicki, Angela Stewart, Denise Esslinger, Erin Binock and Massima Taylor. See if you can remember the order, but we'll go into there. So in spirit of that, someone who is rejoining us in Warren, the first person I would like to introduce is Ms. Lamara Finley. Lamara will serve as our district's communication coordinator working here in this office. And I'll give her an opportunity to say hello.
Hello, everyone. Again, my name is Lamara Finley. I am excited to be here. I am returning. I am a 2015 alumna of Warren Central High School and I'm so excited to be here with the Warrens.
Next, also back to us, but via a slightly different round, I introduce the new assistant principal at Hawthorne, Ms. Alicia Smith.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I am excited to be back in Warren. I was at Eastridge for five years as a kindergarten, first grade and third grade teacher. So I'm happy to be back with Mr. Butler here as his assistant principal.
Mr. Butler does not have a new job. He's just up here supporting, just making sure everyone knew. Next, I would like to call Ms. Angela Stewart up. She is serving as a new assistant principal at Creston Intermediate Middle School.
Hello, everyone. I am Angela Stewart and I am sad to leave Stony Brook as a physical education teacher, but I am happy to be going to Creston and to make some new moves.
Next, I would like to introduce Denise Esslinger. She is joining our adult education program as our assistant director.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Denise Esslinger and I am joining the adult ed program as the assistant director. I'm very excited to be a part of Warren. I spent my last two years in adult ed with Wayne and I'm just, I am just ready to be aboard and work alongside Natalie. So thank you for having me.
Next, I would like to call Mr. Ben Palicki. Got it right?
Yes.
He will serve as our associate principal at Stony Brook Intermediate Middle School.
Good evening, President William and the boards. Yes, I am 14 years in Indianapolis Public Schools and came to Warren. I live right down the street here in Warren and so it's nice to be close to the community. I am the associate principal over at Stony Brook Intermediate and I assure you, they have reached out to me as the old people invited me as a new person to their lunch table. So it has been a joyous entrance into my career here at Warren.
Next, I have Mrs. Erin Binock. She is serving as our assistant director at Warren Online Academy.
Good evening, board. I am so honored in my second year here at Warren to help serve and assist our online virtual students. And I just am so honored to have this opportunity. Thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, even though her approval was last week, I wanted to take the opportunity to invite Mrs. Massima Taylor up to the podium and formally introduce her to everyone as our new principal at Warren Central High School.
Greetings, President Williams and board. I am super excited to step in as the president, or president, Lord. Let me just tell you, these last few days, I feel like something is going on. But as the new principal of Warren Central High School, we have been up and running. We had registration yesterday for grades 10 through 12. There was a great turnout. And currently going on right now is the second session of our freshman orientation. A phenomenal turnout for the evening as well as the morning and we'll do it again one more time tomorrow. So glad to be on board, still in the Warren family, still part and living within the Warren community. So have seen a lot of old students, former students, alumni, and so we just ready to work. Thank you.
Ryan, real quick, there's been posts about people who did not know about registrations. Can you tell them how to register if they have not yet?
Yeah, so registration continues to be online primarily. Registration is available 24/7 online. However, our school buildings are now open, normal school hours. So anyone who needs assistance with registration may go into any of our buildings at any of our campuses and someone will be able to support them to do that. As a, one more reminder with that, registration technically is for new families to warn, but we are asking all families to go back in the parent view to update their contact information. So we have the most up to date contact information for them. They can do that online. But once again, if they need help with that, they can reach out to the schools, they can come into the schools and we can get them help with getting their parent view access for that. So registration really signifies the opening of the school buildings to the public for the remainder of the school year. So we are all here and ready to serve in any capacity that our families or caregivers need. All right, with that, I would like to give one more round of applause to our new administrators in Warren. And I'm sure the board would love the opportunity to shake their hands. So Massima, if you'll lead the group down the path. You asked for it.
Well, we are very excited to have all our new faces here and thank you so much, Mr. Russell, for that.
Ready for the report?
Yes, we are.
Okay, let's move on to reports tonight. On behalf of Dr. Hanson, I'm bringing to you our COVID safety protocol review. As you know, for quite some time now, month by month, we've presented data as far as local impact on not only Ameren County, but within our schools. So as you can see, let me pull this up here. I apologize. This computer is acting up. Oh, sorry. Not able to click anything. Oh, thank you. So as you can see, COVID numbers within Warren have been, well, the month of July has been fairly non-existent. We have had one case. That being said, tonight, a primary discussion for the report would be some updated recommendations for COVID protocols as we start the school year. First and foremost, masks remaining optional. As you know, I believe it was early March, we transitioned to that. A few new additions to COVID protocols. One is we would like the opportunity to bring visitors back into our buildings to encourage that partnership between families, caregivers and communities inside our school building during the day. We would ask visitors to self-screen, same procedures that we've been doing staff with self-screening, but ask visitors to self-screen as well. Additionally, we would like to move for the isolation period to CDC recommendations where students and staff would be allowed to return to school on day six. However, they would be required to wear a face covering or a mask between day six and 10. Currently, we are, or not currently, but at the end of last school year, we closed the school year with students having to be out for 10 full days regardless. And staff had the option of coming back on day six. Obviously, if a student or staff member is still experiencing symptoms or symptomatic or fever, we would ask them to continue to stay home, but we would like for that to move forward as well. And then maintain social distancing when possible. As you know, that the, the numbers have been all across the board, but the three to six feet, feet or foot, social distancing guidelines have been in place. It's not practical or possible in all scenarios within our schools. And to keep that where possible, but in some circumstances, again, buses, cafeterias and such, you wouldn't see that as much or classrooms that may perhaps be a little bit more crowded. Be happy to answer any questions, but that is the recommendation as we start the 2223 school year.
Mr. Russell, I do have a couple of questions. Do we have the capacity to be able to, at least if we approve for visitors, maybe at least do screening ourself? I don't know if staff have. I just kind of with us just transitioning back into letting visitors in. Just a little iffy about, I would feel more comfortable if maybe if we had staff. If we don't have the capacity to do it, then I understand, but I would like to kind of just maybe suggest that. And then for our, the covering, you stated for scholars returning back from that sixth to 10th, how are we going to kind of monitor that? Is it going to kind of be on the honor system that we trust that they're doing that? And the last thing, I know our lunch blocks had changed where it was a little, the population in the cafeteria. Are you going back to, you know, just regular capacity or are we still kind of working that slow?
Let me answer those in reverse order because lunch is on my mind first, probably because I'm hungry. That being said, cafeterias present a challenge in a lot of ways due to space constraints. That being said, we also face some pretty big constraints in terms of flexibility on where we're allowed to feed student now based on federal guidelines. I know Mr. Clayton and I have gone through a variety of options as far as classroom feedings and other things with that. That's no longer permissible by the federal government as far as being able to reimburse. So it kind of forces everyone back into the cafeteria at that. That being said, not every lunch block is completely full. So for the sake of that, we're still going, and I'm going to use the word encourage, which I know can be ambiguous, but we're going to encourage spacing as much as possible to that for the capacity based issues for lunches specifically. It's depending on the building, depends on obviously the size of the cafeteria and the available options for that. Some of our buildings are set up to provide a lot more spacing than others. So it's really hard to have a universal procedure specific to that. That being said, in full transparency, most of the cafeterias, if you happen to look at going into this year, I envision it to look more like pre-COVID in terms of that. Already, just as a reminder, we still plan to do this month by month as we go into this. And then at the August board meeting, if cases rise or other mitigating factors are there where we need to increase safety protocols, we certainly will. And as you know, if we see that soon, we'll do that immediately with that. Okay, now remind me your other two questions because I already forgot.
It was.
Mask. Okay, visitors. I would say we don't have the capacity to self, to screen them ourselves, temperature scans and things like that. I think the first thing that popped in my head when I thought about that is we do use a visitor management system. We sign all parents in with that. I don't think it would be a bad idea to add, not to the management system, but to our front office staffs and the people who man the doors to be able to ask those three questions, right? Like, have you had a fever? Have you been around anyone with COVID with that? So I think that's a good recommendation that we can apply easier than we could scan temperatures and things like that. In terms of the mask, luckily, if our COVID numbers stay consistent, we will be able to monitor those who come back to ensure that they have masks. That's going to require us to notify teachers of a students if they get. a student if they get, if they test positive for that. We've been doing that with staff for some time. We did give, you gave us the permission to have staff come back on day six. We had several staff who took us up on that, and obviously, staff are easy compared to that when you look at students. But again, if our numbers stay in single digits and were that, I don't have any concerns as far as being able to monitor students at that point. If it's when, I won't say when, I would say if they increase, I think we would probably have to revisit that.
Ryan, I have a question. Back to school nights, are we, I mean, they won't be going through the visitor management system?
Correct.
So, we are going to have our families, if they show symptoms, ask them to please wear a mask?
Yeah, so, this has been pretty consistent with how we closed the school year, or how we've handled things like graduation or any other events that we have. We'll ask people to self-screen, and if you're sick, please don't come. That being said, there is, we are relying on our families and our community to be transparent and, you know, consider other people's health needs when they decide to attend an event. We did have registration events yesterday. It was absolutely fantastic to see parents, caregivers, community members in our buildings again, and certainly, that is something that we are really striving and desperately need to continue their presence in our buildings. But in terms of family events, after-school hours or whatever, we don't manage them through a management system. The Raptor Visitor Management, you may remember Chief Pettis referring to it several months ago at a board presentation. That is for during school hours when parents are visiting the building, when students are present in the classroom, not for after-hour events or family or community events type of thing.
I have a question too. I know the mask is optional, right? But the last year happened one situation in a high school. One of the student and a teacher, and the teacher told all the student, "In my class, everybody has to use a mask. You like or not?" That's correct?
I can't refer to that specific incident. I wasn't aware of that. That being said, that we would not, we would not want teachers to engage in that conversation with that. That mask optional is a parent-student choice and should remain so.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, but go ahead.
No.
Okay. You can tell we're all a little nervous about this.
Understood.
So, I would just request if we not wait a month if you see numbers jumping fast, that you call a special meeting, because my concern is, you know, we had a time where we had teachers telling us whether or not they had the vaccine and stuff, but we haven't done that with students, and we can't do that with students. So, we don't know how many of our kids have had the vaccines and have not, and I just want to, it's very, it's a lot more virulent than the other ones have been.
Sure.
A lot more contagious, and so, I just, I'm just a little concerned about that. I just want to keep our kids as safe as possible, and our teachers and staff as well, because even though they've had the vaccine, that may not mean that they're out of the woods from it, so.
And I would, I would assure the board that as desperate as probably we all are to forget about COVID and move forward, we're not naive to the fact that we will continue to look at this on a daily basis. We're still requiring staff to report their cases, both staff and student cases. We monitor those every day. I can tell you, Dr. Hanson and myself get an immediate email every time that thing gets flagged, so we can look at it. And we certainly, again, as much as we want to say, "Let's turn the page and go on to a new chapter," that's not the reality of where we are. We still have a responsibility to do and ensure, we're looking out for the health and safety of everyone, and we continue to do so, and we will pay close attention to that. We'll continue to post our numbers weekly on our website to be transparent with that, and keep a fine eye on it as always.
I'll let Shana trip. I'll let Shana trip with some move that we accept the COVID update recommendations with the provision for superintendent or Mr. Russell to make necessary adjustments during that period.
All right, thank you, guys. Please reach out if you have any questions, have any answer. I do remember a conversation that last February, and I think the consensus we came into is, administratively, we can tighten restrictions at any time necessary, but if we were going to loosen them, we would seek board approval, so.
Maybe we should do that.
Ms. Kim has made it an action item because we're changing.
I will second. I will second LaShana's motion.
Check your screen, board members. It should be available to vote electronically. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. At this time, do we have any yellow cards?
LaShana? No, President Williams, we do not.
Thank you. Well, we don't have any other action items. We did turn that report into an action item. Is there any other action items that we have overlooked? Okay, if not, we're going to move on to our discussion items, and this time, Brian, it is your turn. Okay, thank you.
President Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Hanson in spirit, I suppose. I have a few policies here pursuant to Warren's high standards of job performance and personal conduct. I have three policies for discussion that have to do with dress and grooming. Policy 1216 is a new policy that applies to administrators. We know our administrators are models, professional models for our students, and so, we want this policy to apply to them as well, just so we have it in the administrative section. And I had to smile because so many of them tonight were here looking just sharp, perfect models for this very policy, so. And then, 3216 is staff dress and grooming, and these are updates to policies that we've had in place prior, as well as 4216, which is support staff dress and grooming. Primarily, the bulk of the short policy kind of more succinctly just describes the purpose and importance of the policy, and then, of course, it makes sure that it has the relevant piece on just making sure that when it's implemented, that it's nondiscriminatory in uniform and manner. If there's any questions, I'll be.
I just, I think this is so awesome, because, you know, we must always remember that we're the role models for our students, and many times employers, they complain because students come in dressed any kind of way, and that is inappropriate. So, what they see, they're going to imitate. So, I am so happy that we have these three policies in place. Thank you. Thank you so much, Brian. Is there any other discussion before Brian take his seat? Okay, with that, we're ready for our closing comments, and we'll start with LaShana.
I would not prolong you. It's like 7:40. Enjoy the rest of your evening. I know some, we are going, getting back into school. I will miss our first, our opening day, but please take lots of pictures. I will be in Cancun. So, please take lots of pictures. I know our teachers are ready. I felt their energy at the high school yesterday, so let's start the year off with a bang, and we're going back to kind of what normal was, right?
Thank you, LaShana. Terry?
As we close tonight, I just want to thank everyone, even behind the scenes, that people don't see every day for all their hard work into getting schools ready. I'd like to also say that living close to Grassy Creek, seeing that retention all get covered up and the progress at our schools driving through the community, we know that Skilman's been working hard to get our schools ready to open the bus routes and everything. But for everyone who's had a hand throughout the entire district to get our schools ready, thank you for all you do. We appreciate you, and I hope you all have a great start to your school year.
Thank you, Terry. Julie?
I would like to say, on behalf of Rachel, she is on vacation. That's why she is not here today with her family, so it's a very deserved break for her. But I also, Gloria, you're make new friends, keep the old. I just, it brings back my Girl Scout days, because I had a Girl Scout troop of 21 girls, and they all held hands in my living room and would do that. So, it's very cool, so.
Thank you so much, Julie. Howard?
Well, I am, I'm really looking forward to the opening day ceremony. We haven't had one of those in about, oh, a decade. It feels like, it feels that long, doesn't it? So, we're going to do that, the 27th, right? 27th. It's going to be pretty cool. And then, I'm also looking forward to this Friday, all of these new folks we're bringing into the system. Man, I mean, that's going to be a good day. Plus, the food's going to be good too, so. But I'm really looking forward to meeting all the new folks that are coming on board and that, you know. We lost a lot, let's face it, we lost a lot of folks this, the last couple, since July or June, since June, May, May, it goes back to May. We lost a lot of folks, you know, resignations, retiring, you know, movements, in all kinds of ways. And so, we kind of like depleted our combat readiness, if you will, for educating kids. But we got a whole bunch of people coming in, you know, so it just kind of flipped, you know, and that's really kind of cool. A lot of new faces, a lot of faces who have been here and now coming back, and we even got graduates who are showing up and putting their, their mark on Warren. I mean, it's really, really a good time, really. So, I'm looking forward to the luncheon Friday, because I think it's going to be a great time to see some new faces. The other thing was, take care of your health. Jeez, you know, COVID hasn't gone away, you know? We got this monkeypox now. I don't know, we got Martian flu coming or something. I mean, we got a bunch of stuff, you know, so you just got to be careful. You know, a lot of folks are taking very liberal chances without, with masks and, you know, going around groups and all this kind of stuff. The gyms are all open. Well, LA Fitness is kind of a real small, small group there, so I'm cool there. But I mean, generally, you know, a lot of people are interacting a lot better than they did before, and so, the gyms are opening up, the theaters are opening up, everything's open, but people need to pay attention to the fact that, hey, you know, people still getting sick out there, you know? And, you know, COVID's still here to, you know, to stay, and so, we need to just take precautions. So, I just caution everyone to do something. Pay attention as we continue forward. COVID's not gone. And then, another thing is, a good start to the new year, the new school year. Enough said. Good start to the new school year. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Howard. That was great. Dennis?
Well, what I'd like to say is, I believe this, it will be a good year. Last week, I was working a little bit with in Morehead with Claudia Guzman, and I saw a lot of new Spanish people, you know, enjoying to all the school. And yesterday, I was in Eastridge in a registration, a lot of new people coming, and we happy to have a new people, because we have a great, a great team, great people like you, that it will be no problem to us. And that's it. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to keep it short. I just want to say thank you to all of our board members, first of all, for all their hard work, and our superintendent in his absence in order to try to help get this year started. And then, I want to thank our administration team. Like Howard said, you know, you brought in, we lost a few, but you brought in so many. And Marcus, thank you for spearheading, trying to make sure all of our buildings were ready for the beginning of the school year. And you know what, if I just start naming each person one by one, I'm going to leave somebody out. But I'm just going to say thank you to all of you. You know who you are, and you know what you do, and we just thank you, thank you, thank you. And I think that teamwork is dream work, and we want to continue to have teamwork so that we can have a great, successful, wonderful, blessed year. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.